And I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Stark.
Here.
Excellent. And Vice Chair Bennett, if you'll lead us in the pledge, please.
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sherry, you could turn your microphone up just a little bit.
Okay.
All right. First up is a selection of a planning commission chairperson and vice chairperson. The admin report was a little bit wonky.
I did notice that as I was reviewing it today. Here's, here's how this, here's the order in which this can work, is we can nominate the chair first and then nominate the vice chair second.
Once we have a chair.
Yeah, once we have the chair. With the chair, it would typically be the secretary or myself to do the honors. So what I would do is, looking on page two, it's basically the nomination election of the chair will be conducted by the secretary or myself. I will then ask for nominations. So if there's any nominations at this point by any of the five members here, speak now.
I nominate Mr. Quilisi.
Okay, there's one nomination. I was just about to say, it does not require a second, but a second is always welcome. Is there another nomination?
Interested?
I think Mr. Quilisi has the most experience and has kept a steady hand here and
We have confidence.
Besides, I like being over here shooting shots all the time.
Out there on the left wing.
Yeah, the left wing. The right wing to the audience, though. No, I think he's done a great job and I think it makes sense for him to remain in that position, so I support it.
Okay, then I'll identify that the nominations for chair are now closed and then put it to a vote.
Okay, Sherry, you have to.
Yeah, let's have Sherry do the, let's have Sherry do the roll on that.
On the nomination, not the motion to approve?
Yeah, because we got a, so it was Commissioner Trent and then seconded by Bennett. And now a roll call.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Now, the chair asks for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate John Trent for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
All right, and we close the nominations?
The nominations are closed, and Sherry, call a roll, please.
Bennett?
Yes.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get a new sign.
Yeah, we should.
So, here's what does need to happen, though, that the chair and vice chair typically sit next to each other, so we'll need to do a little swapping here. And then I'll, if you could move your.
I noticed it in the agenda that the, then there was going to be a decision about the dais, and I thought, what's that about? Now I realize, you know.
Yep, it's just swapping of seats, exactly.
So, two swap chairs.
Do we have to do it now?
Yep, it happens now.
Well, Jamie, thank you for that nomination.
It is my pleasure.
Good, good choice. Well, thank you.
Now, I wasn't done when I first joined the commission.
Hey, that's okay.
Because you didn't show up.
Yeah, that's all right. I, I actually recused, recused myself last time because I was just a little bit too crazy. Things were a little bit nutty. No, a little bit.
I recall you were vice at one point.
Yeah, for a short period of time.
And I was gone.
Mm-hmm.
And you did a fine job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
That was a tough.
It'd never be the same.
That was an interesting one.
That was a tough meeting, I, I remember that meeting, wow.
It was interesting.
All right, approval of the agenda. Lucas, do you have any changes to suggest?
No changes.
Commissioners want a change to the agenda? Great, then we'll move on. Public communications, the time set aside for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. I have two speaker cards not for public communications, and I see no one else here present. Sherry, is there anyone in the waiting room with hand raised?
No.
All right, then we'll move on from public communications to the consent item, and that is the minutes of the regular meeting of May third. Does any commissioner have an amendment or a refinement of those minutes?
I have an observation, what page are they?
It's tab two.
Item two, tab two, yeah.
I noticed it in the agenda. This is not a mistake, but it did come out in here that our.
A refinement of those minutes.
Page two, reprising your comments on the Ayers project?
No, no.
Oh.
It was, well, let me just, the, there was a comment by the city council person who was our, our minder or.
Liaison.
Our liaison.
Liaison.
Yeah.
And it was interesting, and I really thank you for providing all of the backup, the sort of job description for a commissioner, because it states that, that the council persons who perform that, oh, thank you, the council persons who perform that function are, since they have the ability to vote on any opportunity to overturn a ruling by this commission and a referral to the city council, that they're, they are supposed to abstain. And that didn't happen at the, at the last meeting, and I was sort of surprised by that, and I don't know, I, I saw it in here, I thought.
You're talking about, you're talking about comments from the audience supporting something?
The, the council person was making comments of support from the audio.
For, for a decision.
And I just thought, in fact, she mentioned that one of them, these people was a constituent and, you know, so on and so forth. And I, and I sort of winced, and I thought, that's, that's not right. And then, going through the backup that we got for this meeting, it was in, it was in there that that was not to be done, so.
Yeah, Councilmember Lang is listed as a speaker on both item three.
Yes.
And item five.
Right.
Yeah.
I think five is appropriate, because that's not a quasi judicial or any kind of applicant. That's just a policy issue and, and they have a right to speak on those.
I, I, well, in reading it, I'm not sure we do, we did not have an opinion from council on that last time, and I would ask that staff ask council about that, and that, that we provide the feedback loop to council that.
Check with the city attorney on the general topic.
We had before, because we had Bill, my, Bill Wirick, at, when he was the liaison, gave us his opinion whether we could form committees, you remember that?
Yeah, I do.
And then he and Francina spoke out on, I forgot what the issue was, but you remember that? They were, were, they were gonna.
I'm not saying it hasn't ever been done, I'm saying it's, it's not good practice according to the, with the handbook.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
City council should not.
Look, I don't, I don't necessarily want to dwell on it, but yeah, we can look into that further, and I can, I can pose the question.
We were talking.
When it happened, I winced, and I thought, is that the appropriate role for, because they do, they do have another bite at the apple.
Sure.
I think that on any.
Do you think it was for item three?
Must have been for item three.
It was the item of the second story.
Okay, so that's item three.
And that's a, that's an individual decision that, you know, when they're later have to do it, they're not supposed to be opining on quasi judicial or individual.
Right.
Under their own protocols, okay, they state that a city councilman should not be speaking prior to something presented them if it's a quasi judicial or a specific applicant. However, on legislative matters or in general policy matters, they have complete free speech to speak on it at any time, so they could go out in the, you know, to a.
Yeah. The third item is an item that could potentially be appealed or called up by councils.
Yeah, that one made sense, the fifth, the other one, I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
I don't think matters, yeah.
Okay.
But I think you're right about that one.
It's an administrative thing, yeah. All right. Yeah, and the, the minutes simply list that council member as a speaker. Anyone who wishes to look at the video can draw their own conclusions, but I think you're right, it's not something that should be done. The, the typical response that we have gotten in the past from council member liaisons is, thank you for your effort, and stop there.
Yep.
And all that's appropriate, of course.
So, can, any, who can appeal a design review, anybody in the city?
I think so.
It's council or.
No, appeal it from us to the council.
Appeal from here to council, anybody can appeal.
Yeah, they.
The projects.
You're approving the project, but it's still appealable to council.
There's a fee for an appeal, but anyone can do it.
And council member can do it, too, because they did it with the Becker project.
Two council members, just like two commissioners, can have, have it put on the agenda.
Well, they actually appealed a decision of this body.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's how that got to the city council.
We're, we're, we're getting off track here, thank you.
Okay, just clarify.
All right, so, do we have a motion on the minutes, on the consent item?
I move that we approve the minutes of May third.
My second.
Very good. Any discussion? Sherry, call a roll, please, on item two.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific. All right, on to item three, requested by Commissioners Trent and Starkweather to discuss the possible creation of a parking committee. If you have something you want to say, Lucas, then I'd like to talk about Monday's meeting.
And I would like to clarify the actual request, because that's not what I was requesting, but anyway, go ahead.
Oh.
So this is, so at the meeting, at the last regularly scheduled meeting, we, this body had asked for this item to be brought forward at the next regularly scheduled item or for the item to be placed on the next available meeting. We had a light agenda, so it's on this one.
So can I clarify my request?
This is an ad hoc parking committee of this?
Yeah, this is the, this is the discussion of, of having the, of possibly creating an ad hoc. The, the, the thing that, that this body needs to remember is, in order for that to take place, there still needs to be a recommendation that you take forward to city council with that request, with that request, and then asking for further guidance. Creating an ad hoc just on its own is something that still requires city councils, essentially their blessing.
Okay, so it's a vote on recommending that city council allow us to have.
Yeah, providing.
Ad hoc committee.
Yeah, providing as much information in terms of how this, this parking committee by this body as an ad hoc would function, I think would be helpful, and probably clarifying how that would be different, or maybe in support of what's already created through city council, which is already a parking ad hoc.
So my request, I don't know how the two got mixed up, because I made it directly to two city council members, and I brought it up at the last meeting, was that we appoint two people to serve on the city's ad hoc committee.
Okay, so that's different than what we're talking about here.
That's a different decision.
Because that's what I had requested, that this item B.
Okay.
Because why have, why have both, it's where, we've got two people that are, a committee that are represented on that, we don't need a separate task force, that was my view.
I think this, this came up because we had originally had a parking committee, I think it was yourself and Judy. Yeah, and then city council said, you know, Jamie, I apologize. And then it was the city council, you know, we, we had the new election, new city council comes in, we didn't have direction. They gave us direction, and they said, you can form your own committee, but you just can't have staff involvement. And so then we made a motion to put it on the agenda.
Was that the housing committee, or was that the parking committee?
This one was the parking, the last one we talked about was housing.
Well, if I can explain what has happened since then, and Steve can, the chair can spell out more, but what, I had reached out to both Souza and Francine, Councilman Francina and Councilman Lang about, and I know you spoke at one of our meetings when she was here, that it made sense that if you're going to be doing parking with the city, that you ought to have some planning commissions, since that's under our purview.
Yeah.
And she, Rachel Lang was going to check with the manager whether she could appoint us.
Right.
And which she essentially did ad hoc wise, at least for the last meeting, she said, Jeffrey, yeah, I'm, Susan and I were inviting you, but I thought it would be a little, little more formal if this body decided who their representatives were.
Well, since.
Can we do that tonight, or we have to put it on the agenda?
Inclusion, inclusion in the city council's ad hoc committee is not this agenda item.
It'd be different.
So I think we have to make that, that decision, that recommendation, another time.
I, I think within the guise of what we're talking about here, it's the creation of a parking committee or within that framework. I think as long as we're not going into talking about other areas like housing or specifically parking on specific sites, we're in the umbrella of a parking committee. How that ends up getting framed and moving, moving forward as potentially a recommendation by this body has a couple of different avenues that it could go down. You're, I, I think, Chair, I think what you're asking is, because it's, it's this parameter that we can only speak on this parameter, this parameter allows for kind of an overarching discussion in terms of how we move forward.
Right.
I know, I, I get and I appreciate keeping it within the timeframe.
By the way, welcome, Epi, didn't say hello before, but glad to see you on screen, at least. Anyway, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to take up that related topic right now, if it's allowed.
So there's, yeah, maybe we check in with Epi.
You're not muted.
I hope you're not muted.
Doesn't seem like it. I don't know.
Why don't we have our discussion and try to catch Epi in a little bit?
Yeah, what I, what I was, what I was going to add is, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how the, the invitation, there was a, there was a meeting of this ad hoc committee. It included council members Francina and Lang, Laura Ward, the publisher of the newspaper, Jamie Fleming from the city council, or from the Chamber of Commerce, and Lucas, and James Vega, and Jeffrey, and myself. I was invited by Councilmember Lang.
There was also a member of the community as well.
I'm sorry? Oh, there was at least one.
Larry Steingold.
Oh, Larry Steingold was also.
I don't know how he got in there, but he got there.
Forgetting, I don't know how he found out, but, and another question for Epi, if, if there is an ad hoc committee, when it meets, as opposed to a standing committee, which I think Complete Streets was a standing committee of this commission, does an ad hoc committee's meetings have to be noticed and publicized? Epi?
Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you.
Just barely, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I, I knew you, I'm having a little tech trouble, I heard you had a question for me earlier, but then the, the video paused. The question, as I understand it, was the difference between the ad hoc and a subcommittee, and dealing with the, the noticing for the.
Ad hoc or standing committee?
Standing committee, and, and the Brown Act.
Right. If there are going to be two members, and it's going to be an ad hoc, and I don't believe it has to be, the meetings have to be, are, are they not subject to the Brown Act, is my understanding?
Ad hoc committee meetings, okay.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah.
When does a stand, ad hoc committee, by the length of time it's in existence, become a standing committee?
There's no bright.
Because this committee has been in existence for four years.
Which, the part, the city council parking committee?
It was set up in June of two thousand nineteen.
Oh, okay.
By the city council.
Here or?
No, by the city council, it was when the parking stuff was presented by James, and they decided not to do a parking study, and instead set up a.
That's right.
Ad hoc committee, at the time was Souza and Bill, and then Bill went off and, and they said, we're going to continue this committee, so that just makes, I'm just raising the question, is, you know, it seems like ad hoc by definition is a short-term committee.
Single focus, short-term.
But four years seems way beyond short-term to me.
Did they ever meet?
They did meet, they did meet, they paused maybe, but yeah.
In the world, the nonprofit world, the differentiation is that which is given to the committee at the time of its inception. Is it going to be a standing committee? I mean, is it going to recur, is it going to recur and report on a standing basis, or is it, is it around a specific issue and will go when that issue, when a final recommendation is made by the body? And so time hadn't, at least in my, as, as I've chewed on this issue in, in, in previous bylaw discussions, time had no, you know, you have an ad hoc committee that lasted twenty years.
But I think that under the Brown Act, it's different than a nonprofit, so I'd love to hear what our attorney thinks of that, or maybe not, but I don't care really.
Sorry, I, I lost, sorry, I lost you guys for a second, so I was missing part of that, but I can do some follow-up research about, but I thought the direction was only for an ad hoc committee, it's supposed to be a standing committee.
Well, that's really for the city council to address, really.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, and I, just, just to, to focus the discussion, the, that ad hoc that was created was really to focus on the downtown parking and the circulation that exists within that manner. Because the parking study was really to be focused, like the two previous parking studies from nineteen ninety-one and two thousand and six, focused on the downtown area.
It was downtown, but writ large, so it went a couple of blocks each direction from Ojai Avenue and stuff like that.
Sure, downtown, downtown proper, yeah.
Yeah. At any rate, at this point, I'm really interested in being on that committee. Having, having attended on Monday, I thought that that committee meeting was going to be about parking writ large, and it turned out that the almost sole subject of that meeting was how to respond to the lawsuit asking that the suggested referendum, which was rejected by the city clerk on technical grounds, be reinstated as a referendum.
For valet parking.
For, and that was strictly about valet parking.
Yeah.
A referendum to ban valet parking, and.
Yeah, and that focused on the downtown area, if you recall correctly. The.
Yeah.
The important thing, I think, to note is, when these committees or this ad hoc meets, it's typically got one or two items that have been identified either by city staff or beyond. In this case, it was beyond, and looking for some sort of a recommendation by that body that then gets forwarded to city council for additional.
And that, that was not a closed session, so I think it's legal to talk about what went on there?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen, we'll see a report from the city manager to city council next Tuesday, reprising what happened at that meeting, at that, sort of, under this new city council, the first meeting of the ad hoc parking, parking committee.
Who's suing whom?
The, the.
The same old group is suing, but they, they put forward, they put forward a proposed referendum. The city clerk said there was something.
The timing, I think, timing issue.
I don't know if it was timing.
She didn't.
Some technical issue.
It was a technical, yeah.
The, the publishing of a, you have to publish your.
Notification to the public.
Not, yeah, to the public, they never submitted that to the, to the clerk, even though they did do the publishing and they had a certification, they didn't submit it to the clerk, that was a technical violation. And actually, it's not simply Ojai, it's, it's the same people, but it was, it was an individual who did it, and then she had an attorney, which is not, you know, technically it's not simply Ojai. And, and so what happened was that there had been discussions about settling this thing, and I don't know if we want to go into the details of what we discussed or not, but.
I'd say let's stay high level.
No, let's not.
Probably don't want it.
So, anyway, we, I thought the, the group that was there, at least, you know, and now they may be talking about expanding it, that we, we're kind of like this group, we all kind of worked together pretty well, I thought. You know, we compromised and everybody came away with a consensus, which is kind of amazing.
There was a recognition that valet parking does not currently occur as a phrase, a defined thing in the municipal code. So, in a technical sense, valet parking is currently unregulated in the city. It comes about case by case as things come to the planning commission, is the second half of that sentence. But my suggestion, and I think it's the way it's going to go, and Jeffrey pointed out very nicely, that it's not in this, it's not in the code right now, my suggestion was that we admit that it's not currently regulated, and that we propose at the next status meeting before the judge, that the city has a process for amending the code to regulate valet parking, and we commit to proceed with that process. And that would be a decision here.
So I think that, as I recall, the recommendation that the manager and his agenda item is going to propose is that they agree to, to send this to the community development director and the planning commission to develop an ordinance, was that, on your understanding?
Yeah, simply put, yeah. Focusing on key aspects, one is inserting stuff regarding a public hearing, and then the second piece is some sort of a definition to kind of tie it all together.
A basic, basic requirement would become, if you want to do valet parking, come to the planning commission.
And some, some objective standards, you know. So it would come back to us.
Are all of you aware that there's a bestseller out now, that just hit the New York Times Bestseller List? It was reviewed on NPR this week, called How, How Parking Defines Everything.
Yeah, I think, there you go, oh, is that it?
About paving paradise, how parking explains the world?
Yes, that's.
You think I'm going to miss getting a book like that? I'm only about a third of the way through it, though.
Is that David Shoup's stuff?
No, no, it's not, it's not him.
Oh, okay.
Henry Garner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Graeber, Henry Graeber.
Graeber, yeah, yeah, yeah. He, he starts out with a horror story about someone trying to build an affordable housing in the, on the beach, and how, basically, after like ten years, they can't do it, because they've jacked up the price so high that they can't afford to do it, anyway.
Well, anyway, so.
Can, do we have a motion to?
Ah.
We, before we have a motion, we have a speaker card.
No, I think it's on the West Coast.
Can we, can we continue?
Public discussion, yeah.
Can we continue discussion on this piece?
Yeah.
This, this actual, what we're chatting about?
Let's.
So I think what we need to figure out is, do we want to even have this sort of sub parking committee that doesn't have any, you know, we can't rely on the city for the resources, where we just kind of do our own stuff, or do we not want to do that?
Yeah.
Because that's what this is outlining.
Yeah, but she said we could talk.
Do we want to have, if there's going to be a two commissioner?
Right.
Ad hoc committee on parking?
I guess so.
That is ad hoc to the commission?
Right.
Does that need to be the same two people as the two that are part of the city council's ad hoc committee?
Makes sense.
Makes sense.
Well, good. If it's, if there's any overlap between those two twos, that makes communication. If it's, if there's any overlap between those two twos, that makes communication a little more dicey under the Brown Act.
I, well, why don't we hear our public?
Now, I have a question.
No, be, before we have a motion, we're gonna hear from the public.
That's what I said.
But, but have we clarified with staff what we're going to take up as the topic of this item? And should it be one or both, or?
Could we, well, we're getting deliberation. Maybe we should hear from staff, uh,
Yeah.
People first.
Yeah, I think that's probably best, and then you bring it back for discussion.
I do have one more quick question. I apologize before we, before we have public comment. So has the city, the, the, the council, they have their, their committee, they have already recommended two city or, uh, planning commission folks?
They've invited two planning commissioners
Okay.
To the first meeting.
So
Are they, are they official?
Let me, let me explain what I was explained, anyway, that Rachel and Souza went to check with, with James and whether or not, as the two city council members who are essentially putting this together, that they have authority to invite people to participate.
Right.
And they found out they did.
Yeah.
And they invited us.
Right.
Okay, so that's how we got there.
Right. Okay, so it's official. You guys are there.
I don't know if it's official or not, but
I question the official nature of it, but it was two, two of the ad hoc members that reached out to both of these individuals.
We would rather make it official.
Oh, I, so, okay, I, I got you, okay.
But I think that's more for a discussion piece amongst yourselves after
Yeah, let's hear from the
As long, as long as we have a common understanding of, after public comment, what is it we're gonna be voting on?
Right, and it could be two pieces. You could vote on two, on two pieces as, as
I think, the way you could combine.
As Vice Chair Trent had just mentioned a moment ago.
You, you know, since it's a small pool of candidates and we have the same issue, don't we, coming up with the housing commission or the housing ad hoc commission?
Mm-hmm.
The naming of two people from this body to sit on that.
No, no, we don't have that because they don't have a housing committee. And our had, our ad hoc group is totally separate and we don't have any staff. So that's a totally different circumstance. They actually have created a planning committee. Uh, ad hoc committee, excuse me.
Parking committee, ad hoc.
Parking committee. And, and at least the chairs of it, or the city council members have invited planning members to be part of it. And of course, we requested to be part of it.
I was gonna say, you asked for that invitation.
Well, it's gotta be both ways. And, um, so that's different because we, there is no housing committee that we could join of the, of the city council.
Right, that one's getting workshopped.
That would be a whole different thing if there is one formed at some point.
Right. For the record, I didn't request it, but I think I was invited because I'm chair.
Got it.
And I enjoyed the experience and I, I think we could do some good things with it.
And, and I have to say, I, I did get the invite, but I don't know if it was by accident. It was a, it was a
Not allowed to have three.
It was, somebody was inquiring and they had some questions and I was responding to the questions. And then there was an invite on the, on the, uh, the email correspondence and I just
Was like a group email or?
Yeah, no, it was, no, it wasn't. So I don't know if it was meant to be for me or not. So I, I didn't attend because I thought it was at six o'clock and it was actually in the morning, which I, I just couldn't make it anyway.
It was at nine in the morning. Yeah, you were working.
Yeah, I was working. So, anyway, so anyway, I, I did receive an invite. I don't know if it was official or, or what, or if it was an accident.
All right. Well, I think Lucas has kind of clarified one or two decisions that we could vote on tonight. All right, so we'll stop right there and go to public comment. I have one speaker card, Bill Miley. On item three, the, um,
Parking.
Possible creation of a parking committee. Or inclusion in a parking committee.
First of all, I had trouble parking cause all the pickleball people were taking the spaces. That's not true, okay? So I had a simple thing to say, which I sent you. But right now I am confused. I'm perplexed. And I'm kinda disturbed because all of what you've been talking about seems to be non-transparent. I didn't know about any meeting on Monday. Public meeting? Anyway, that bothers me. It apparently wasn't publicly noticed, cause I read everything. And I probably would have been there.
It was not publicly noticed. And in fact, I got a call from another citi- citizen claiming that even an ad hoc committee meeting has to be noticed and publicized. I don't know. That's why I asked Epi.
Well, I would think if they're inviting people from different commissions, it ought to be public notice. That, that bothers me, okay. So it was a good idea. I liked the idea of creating a parking committee. And I don't know as much as all you folks know. And I did hear council member Lang last Tuesday say, I would like it on the agenda. Okay? Um, but you know that. You know more than I do. And that bothers me. Cause I like to say my city is transparent. But apparently isn't. So what about the parking study that the commission was assigned either last year or the year before and you had on your list?
We did, in fact, we did, in fact, have it on our list.
I made sure that it was on the list.
And, and the commission has no budget and we are currently under orders from council not to involve any staff time in what we do. So I'm not sure how we could accomplish
Okay.
that task that was assigned by a prior council.
So that, that answers my question of what happened. Now, a few years ago, when we had a tourist district and the motels and hotels taxed themselves. So Scott Eichler and the the staff person he had could advertise Ojai all over. And that legislation came up for sunset and was not renewed. But one of the issues that came up was, and you know this, parking starts to get difficult on Wednesday until about midday on Sunday. And then you can park wherever you want, right? And there was some discussion at that point to see if the town and, um, tourist industry could start having activities that would draw people from Sunday afternoon through Wednesday. So Monday, Tuesday would also distribute the cars throughout seven days rather than just on four days. Okay. That takes care of the item. But what's the, what's going on with proposing that a valet study, a valet parking be placed into an ordinance? Where'd that come from? That's your rhetorical question. Because and to provide validity to the referendum. It sounds like we're providing validity to the referendum, which I am definitely against that referendum. It worked really hard, cause it was all designed to kill the El Robla Hotel. And they beat them.
Too late for that.
I suggested in an email that they buy the lot over on Matilaha. And they did it because of my suggestion. So they have the valet thing. So that bothers me, anyway, okay. So, um, it seems like this is not being coordinated very well. Not by you. But by the administration.
I think the, um, if I can say something on that, um, can I? Uh, I just think we, we should not get into this recommendation because it's gonna be for the city council on Tuesday. And people are gonna have a chance to speak and it's gonna be written up.
And the topic here is, are we gonna have a committee?
Yeah, I don't think we should get into that.
Or we're gonna contribute to a committee? That's our decision for tonight. So I appreciate Mr. Miley's comments, but we have a different decision to make tonight. Anyway, Sherri, do we have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised?
No.
Okay. Then we're going to close the public comment portion of this item and come back to deliberations. Lucas, if you could again clarify for us, do we have one decision to make tonight or two or what?
I think Vice Chair Trent said it well when he said, look, is this one or two things that we're looking at? The first one being a, a recommendation moving forward to city council, identifying two members as a recommendation to be added to as a request to the ad hoc committee that is existing, um, as, at the pleasure of city council right now, right?
That's decision one.
That's decision one. The second decision would be taking forward a recommendation on whether or not to create the planning commission's own subcommittee. And then what tasks or assignments? Basically like rules or
Involving staff.
Without involving staff, yes. No staff time. I think that's really the two pieces that we're looking at. Both of those moving forward. Now, obviously if this body only moves forward on one, then you move forward on one. And then you abstain on, on the other. Or you move forward on both.
Okay.
I, I have a quick question. Um, is there space on our agenda items to get, um, uh, kind of an overview of what they talked about at the, the council meetings? The two bot-, the two members that go, you know?
You're talking about the ad hoc?
Yeah, yeah, the ad hoc. Is there room on our agenda to have a discussion on that as well?
You mean, us to make a report?
Yeah, I just like
And discuss it? I would think that would be totally appropriate.
Permanent part of the agenda.
Yeah.
As long as that committee is there and doing something that we report back.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely think that would be, I would consider that an obligation if I were appointed.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if, if we have that, I don't know if there's a need for another one.
That's the, look, it's a discussion for this body to have, but I was kinda thinking the same thing.
In my opinion, your first recommendation seems to fill the bill. And it would encourage the city council to include our two nominated people to participate fully at the city council level. I don't see a real purpose in having a second subcommittee here, just in the planning commission. It seems like duplication.
I, I would have to agree. And, and at some point, if it comes to making changes to the municipal code to deal with valet parking or any other parking related issue, I think that will come before this commission for a recommendation to the city council. Regardless of what the ad hoc committee does, I think we as planning commission owe them our professional judgment on the, on whatever issue it is that's parking related.
One good thing about this, this strategy or this process would be that the planning commission would be kept up to date.
Yeah.
What they're doing and whether it becomes a public body or not. I, I personally would encourage them to be a public body, but it's not my decision. But, um, uh, if it's not, then it's even better that we can report.
And we'll
It's not a secret group. It's just not a public group, you know?
Yeah, and you're reporting, you're not necessarily deliberating, right? So it's an informational piece that
Right.
two of those members would be providing. And obviously I'm in most of those meetings, not all. I'm available and, and those when I can be. I, I would obviously help out in that effort as well.
Well, you're helping the council members, not us.
When the information comes forward before this full body, then yes, I would be helping to make sure that the information is
But you're providing technical assistance to the committee like you did at the last meeting about
Yep.
how the ordinances work and so forth.
Exactly.
Uh, that's one big advantage of this process over the other one is that we actually get staff support.
So then the second decision is we need to make a motion to nominate two people from this body to
Yeah, that's the first decision. The second decision was, do we have a separate body?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think
Yeah.
Well, let's do the, let's, let's vote on that first one.
Let's, let's get the people named.
Okay.
Recommend two people to be part of the city council's ad hoc committee.
Right, so that's the second.
In a, in order at this point.
So let, let's do the first one first. So I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, remove the planning commission parking committee. I guess ad hoc commi-, ad hoc committee.
Decline to form one.
Yeah, yeah. Make a motion to, to remove that.
Well, for discussion purposes, I'll second that. Discussion?
The stat contention on the first one?
I
No.
Well, if you don't appoint anybody, then we, then we don't have anybody going there.
So far, if, if the vote, if the vote is in favor of this motion, then we do not have a committee of the planning commission.
Okay. Can you withdraw your motion?
I, all right, I withdraw my motion. We will approach that one.
If, if we, um, have a motion which includes naming two members of a planning commission subcommittee and that we recommend their inclusion in the city council subcommittee. Wouldn't that cover it all?
Does that float your boat?
That would, that would cover the first piece. The second piece then is
And then, and then we can get to Trent's.
Yeah, Vice Chair Trent was getting at.
Okay. Can I just move what I just said? Do I have to say it all over again? Yes, I have to say it all over again.
Uh, no, you do not. You, you've already stated it, so it would need a second.
Did you? I'm confused. Your, your motion names two people?
No.
The motion is to name two people.
The, the motion is to name two people.
Moving forward to city council.
People, okay.
And can I just do that now? And
You can name the two people as a part of your motion, yes.
Okay.
And then you see, see if you get a second.
And I, I would like to have Mr. Quilice and Mr. Starkweather nominated to our subcommittee, planning, uh, uh, parking subcommittee. And then the second part of that motion is to recommend to the city council that our parking subcommittee be included in their subcommittee on parking.
Ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc. Parking committee.
Okay, so if I understood that correctly, it's not a subcommittee of the planning commission. It's the recommendation for two members which you just mentioned, to the city councils.
Actually, I, I intended to have them be our parking subcommittee.
Ad hoc.
So you're combining
Ad hoc. It, yes, I am.
She's combining both.
And that, and that we then recommend our ad hoc parking committee be included with the city council, that we recommend.
Can we discuss that real quick?
Sure.
Okay.
It requires a second.
Yeah. Oh, it requires a second before we discuss it. Okay. Uh, so a question on that. So if we have our own committee, then we still have to come up with our own rules and you guys have to come up with meetings and we have to
And those parameters would then be forwarded to city council for consideration.
Oh, that's interesting.
So maybe we should just
Maybe we don't want that.
Yeah, I would, that's what I would say at this point, because if they decide not to reject this, then we could go, come back and ask for a separate committee.
Okay, I would like to change my motion.
Okay.
To name Mr. Quilice and Mr. Starkweather as our representatives to the ad hoc parking committee of the city council.
Okay. Requires a second.
Still okay by the seconder? All right, discussion?
Yeah, we are, uh, we're making a recommendation.
It's a recommendation to council
Got it.
to include two people.
Just wanted clarity.
Okay. By name, yeah.
Include two people and who they are.
And who they are, yes.
Okay.
All right.
We have a second, so
Sherri, can we have, can we have a roll call on the motion then to include two people by name, two commissioners by name to the, recommend to the city council?
Or to the ad hoc committee. I don't know who has the authority.
No, it would be, it would be city council at this point.
Okay, okay.
Moving that forward, yes.
To include two commissioners by name on the city council's ad hoc committee on parking.
Yep. Quilice?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, Starkweather.
Yes.
Right, done. Now, do we have a second decision to make?
I think we should probably make that official, formal
Yeah.
um, regarding the second piece, which is the subcommittee of this body for parking committee.
Do we need city council approval to have our own Do we need City Council approval to have our own ad hoc committee?
Yeah.
I don't think we want to give them that option.
We just aren't going to do that, are we?
So why don't we just table that matter?
You can table it.
I would, I would make a motion and we table that because if they
See, let's see what the City Council does.
They don't do it, then we could come back and ask for it.
Good point.
I would move, but we table that until we need to.
Second.
It'd be tabled and just with the understanding that if you are making a motion, that then still gets forward to City Council for, for determination and direction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a second?
Consensus on that?
I seconded.
Oh, you seconded, okay.
All right.
Well, then we have a motion and a second. Then Sherry, let's have a roll call on that.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific.
So we tabled it. All right.
Tabled.
Wham. All right, item four, future agenda items. Lucas taken away. Yeah, Maura got the night off. So did Alex.
Yes, I gave them the night off.
I could have had dinner after this meeting.
So, uh
Still dragging.
I've already eaten.
Up and coming for our next regularly scheduled, um, meeting on June 7th, we have a design review permit, new single family residence, uh, single story on a vacant lot with a slope greater than 15% and a two-story ADU. It's 380 Longhorn within Persimmon Hill.
It's the two-story ADU that brings us into it?
Uh, it's actually both. It's the combination of the two-story ADU and the fact that during development on more than 50%, yes. Both of those trigger Planning Commission review and determination. The second one is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance revisions. There's been, um, new laws that have come into play over the last two years. And they've, the combination of the two have, have caused our ordinance to be revised to bring it up to speed with current law. So we'll be seeing revisions.
You'll bring us a red line of the ADU ordinance?
Yeah, yeah, they're pretty straightforward.
10-21709, I think, right?
Yeah, 1709. They're pretty straightforward, but I think it garners some discussion clarification on it.
So we'll discuss it and propose something and then we'll have a public hearing in another meeting.
Well, what it'll be is a public hearing first.
Oh, okay.
If there is additional questions and potential revisions, then we'll, we could always continue it, but I don't anticipate it given what we're looking at.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And then we don't have any items for the 21st, but I will admit that there are several items that I think are close to being ready for the 21st, so I don't anticipate that meeting getting canceled. Including ones that this body has seen.
Are we still on, on plan to not have a meeting on the 5th of July?
Of July?
Because you weren't going to be here and I'm not going to be here.
Uh, we can talk about that at the next meeting if you want. I can add that to the agenda in terms of just outright canceling, um, a meeting, you know, based on maybe a lack of a quorum or individuals. Or lack of cases, yeah. One of the two.
Not a great time for a meeting on July 4th.
Excuse me, Lucas, it is on the agenda.
We have it on the agenda?
Yes. Under number four on the agenda.
We had talked about it the last meeting, so.
That's why we added it.
Where are number four? Oh.
Oh, I see. It says discuss cancellation of future regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings.
Oh, all right.
Okay, I would move that we cancel the July 5th meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that.
That's fine. I need, I need, I need a vote still on it, um, in terms of canceling the 5th. That would still then, uh, assume we have the meeting on the second, the second me-
That'd be the 19th.
19th, right?
19th, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion of the motion? Sherry, let's have a roll call on that motion to cancel the July 5th.
Hold on, was there?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we do motions, we have public comment. Mr. Bill Miley.
About that motion or?
I don't know. It says it's item four about schedule.
Oh, cool.
No point in sitting here without talking, right? So I'm responding as if I'm a public, I'm all, I'm the whole public.
For tonight.
Yeah. And so my first response is and was, what's this about? So I'm a public person and I read it on the agenda. And it looks like the Planning Commission is going to go silent because they have nothing to do.
What is, what is what about?
Item four.
Item four, which it says, consider canceling scheduled meetings. Okay. So I can, I assume that statement was because requests for plan review are lacking and code reviews are done. But the housing element has multiple action items. And I participated in three housing element cycles over the last 15, 16 years. And I know that each of them has action items listed to be done by someone. And certainly Cycle SIS, as you well know, six, has lots of action items. And that's why you have a housing committee, affordable housing committee, right? It's affordable.
No.
No.
Or is it a housing committee?
It's, it's a housing committee.
Okay. Well, that includes affordable. So you know this, but I wanted to make the point public is that there's a whole bunch of action items and I put three or four of them attached to the email. And I'm going to read this one. It's H4 under goal two. City shall adopt policies, programs, and procedures to facilitate attainment of RENA goals. It's going to happen because the RENA numbers are minuscule. But here's the statement, with particular emphasis placed on the needs of persons and families of lower income, including extremely low income, and Cabrillo is helping us there. And those with special needs, elderly, disabled, developmentally disabled, female-headed households. And you might remember that the recent help of Ojai newsletter spoke about females with kids living in cars as one of the larger numbers of folks. I think that's something that, oh, and then the, the, the last important key issue here is the question is what responsibility and duty does the Planning Commission have for these action items? And each action item says community development planning, right? Now, I don't know whether that's community development and planning or the Planning Commission. So I'm suggesting that the issue of action items in the housing element fits your housing committee. Also maybe fits future meetings that have no scheduled reviews for you to do something about. So the other question is how active does the City Council want the Planning Commission to be? My guess is that two or three of them don't want you to do that. So, um, the last thing I wrote just while I'm sitting over there is I think it's, it would be appropriated in this town to have a citizen oversight, has nothing to do with government, to watch what's going on, to see what's being done and not being done in the housing element. And having communication with the state to make sure that the state knows what we're doing and what we're not doing. That's my thoughts, guys.
Okay.
I just met this morning with a group of people concerned about the unhoused folks and the need for shelter in town. And there's a movement to get that accomplished, maybe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Should we address the motion that's on the floor first before you respond to any of those things?
Yeah, we can address the motion because the motion was to cancel specific date.
Um, I, I just had a, a quick question on that. If the agenda said to cancel July 5th and not just future agenda items, would that be a little better clarity?
Yeah, the other thing is, is this body can certainly
It's the motion.
Yeah, and just giving some, some background information, this body can certainly have, and we've done this before, special meetings on items. If there's an item that
Extra meetings.
An extra meetings. We've certainly done that as well. So it's within, it's within our code that we have meetings on the, on the first and third. But if there are no items, then those meetings typically get canceled.
Now, another question on the, on the
But I will say this, we have not had a meeting canceled in, in quite some time.
Yeah, we usually have something. Uh, we typically had the general plan on there as kind of a reoccurring kind of item, but I don't know, is that completed?
No, it is not completed.
It's packed at ground zero practically.
All right, so that
I, I have not put it on there only because picking up the pieces at this point and trying to figure out where to move forward from, from there. There's some things that we're working on with, um, Raimi and Associates with the consultants, so.
And then with the housing element, I know there were action items, but those don't necessarily come to us unless City Council or staff directs us to review it.
Right, we've gone through those 19 programs twice now. Um, I brought it before just to give an early look at what we're looking at. And then just recently, it came before this body and we are gearing up. We have an advanced planner, which you're all aware of, as well as, um, current planning, um, going full steam ahead on those, both of those fronts.
Wide multicolored sheet or sheets.
Yeah, and
About percentage of completion of various tasks.
The, each of these, each of these tax, tasks that come before this body, I think it's important to note that it's not something where you throw it together and you slap it together. There's a lot of care and consideration, a lot of research that goes into each of these items that come before this body. Now, there are some of these items that don't necessarily take a lot of work and they're just simply, it's something that we've committed to. It's something that's potentially just added to, um, the city's website and it's done. And then we check that box and we, when we do our ATP or, um, not ATP, our
APR?
APR, thank you, Cheppers, acronyms. Our APR, we note that.
We should never use acronym, by the way. We should spell them out.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Because the public doesn't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, so when
Performance report.
Yeah, exactly. And that happens every year, um, as a requirement and that gets sent to HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department for the state. So, um, there's definitely a lot of oversight that's already taking place by this body. Um, and then there's some oversight that was already identified when it came before this body in 2021. I think we had in between three and four meetings where we focused on specific areas and certainly invited the public for that comment period.
So if you, whether you've been keeping up with it or not, of course, the, the housing element was on the last City Council agenda. And I'm not even sure what they decided, but some kind of consultant is going to write something to revise it for sending back to HCD and then they, if that is not acceptable, they're going to hire a consultant, so.
Agenda item was receive and file a report and spend $20,000 on another consultant.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me what they were doing, but
Yeah, so
But it does affect us.
It's giving, it's basically giving authorization and identifying that, look, there's a good chance that we're going to have a third party to come in beyond the consultant we've been using and have another expert come and say, okay, you've gotten this, we're hoping to find someone that, um, what we're, what we're wanting to do is find someone that's successfully seen this, this go forward, these housing elements go forward. Using them as kind of a, hey, checks and balances, how, how close are we on this? Given what you've done or what your group has done in the past. It's not saying that we are doing it right now. It's giving us staff the authority to go out and, and reach out to that individual, that group.
I did have a question though, because it confused me on one thing because I did read the letter from HCD since it was in the newspaper. The, one of the items on there had to do with our design guidelines and that they were too subjective. And I was under the impression that when we did action items, then we had some period of time to complete those, but they seem to be implying that we should have already done that. Is that the way you read that paragraph?
Yeah, it's giving us
Cycle, we have eight years to complete this.
Yeah, but the reality is you want to front end it. That's the reality.
So they're pushing more to front end things rather than we've got all the time in the world to get, get all these action items done. Is that
Realistically, that's what I, I don't want to get into too much of the detail on, on how previous cycles, I know there's certain members of the community that have been a part of it. I have as well. This is my third cycle and it is not the same as the first cycle I went through, that's for certain. Um, we're looking at a new um, order in terms of how these housing elements are reviewed, considered, and then processed. That's as far as I want to go with this. I know we're getting into the weeds on some of this, so, but I appreciate the conversation.
Assume that other cities aren't going through the same sort of issues.
Uh, so planners are a bit of a, of a geek network, if you will, and I've reached out to several of my geek, geek friends.
Have, have there been any cities that had their housing elements certified now by HCD?
Uh, are we talking Ventura County?
Any, any city or county, any jurisdiction.
Forty percent, only forty percent had been approved, something like that.
I'm not sure. I, I can't fact check that right now.
Be surprised if it was that high.
It's not
It was forty, sixty. I don't know which way it went. There were sixty approved and forty-nine or forty-two.
Yeah, if we're looking at SCAG, maybe that number's relatively close in terms of percentages. But for Ventura County, for instance, we're among the majority that are not, um, certified at this point.
Um, are all of them being sued or under threat of suit?
Of litigation? That I'm not sure of.
Only 10 by that group because I looked on their website. They have sued.
The letter, the letter mentioned 10 cities they're suing right now.
Californians for homeownership.
Californians for homeownership.
So there's 10 they're suing now, but we don't know how many they're threatening to sue.
Right.
No, but we know that there's one that they're threatening to sue.
We do.
Which is us.
We're one of those, yeah.
On the list, so
Oh, we are.
We're on the list.
We're one of the 10?
Mm-hmm, and on the 29th. The deadline.
End of the month is their stated deadline, but
Yeah.
We don't know what's going to happen.
Is that, is that, is that lawsuit because of a specific action or is this?
The fact that we're not yet compliant in the state's view.
Cities that they think are, been not real, um, as compliant, proactive on housing as, as they would like, put it that way. Like, we've built none in 30 years, so.
And
We're getting too much into the weeds on some of this. I want to stay, we were staying high level and I barked at Vice Chair Trent, so I'm going to do the same.
Okay. We can, uh, we can continue this discussion after the meeting if anybody cares, I guess. But we do have a motion on the table
Yes.
to cancel the July 5th Planning Commission meeting. Discussion?
Um, I mean, I, I would think if there was nothing pressing, you know, then I think it's fine.
My reason for it, just to be clear, we're the only commission that meets twice a month.
Yeah.
No, the City Council does.
City Council, but I meant only commission, the only commission that meets twice a month. We're volunteers and try to schedule a vacation and avoid missing a meeting. And we ought to be able to have vacations.
You either have two weeks or three weeks between meetings.
So I think not having a meeting on the first uh, Wednesday of July, because it's always going to interfere with 4th of July, would make sense and maybe we should plan that at the beginning of the year, but yeah, I don't, I don't think it's fair to us who are putting a lot of work into this to, you know
So you're in favor of the motion?
I'm, well, yes, definitely. I'm just explaining my reason. It wasn't because we didn't have anything on there. It was just that in principle, I don't think we should be meeting on, on the first week of July. If we want to move back the second week, fine, whatever, but anyway.
We can, we can always decide sometime in June if we need a meeting, a special meeting in July that does not fall on the 5th.
I will admit if there are critical items that are looming within certain deadlines, then yes, it may, it may garner a special meeting.
We should take care of them.
Yeah, I, just to be fair though, I'm looking at the items that we have currently. I'm not seeing it that at this point, but that could change.
Very good. Sherry, let's, uh, call the roll on the motion to cancel the July 5th meeting.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I was asleep. Not asleep, but I was daydreaming.
All right. Then we have Director's Report. Anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, not, not at this, at this time. I think we, we covered the ad hoc discussion that took place earlier, so that's kind of what I was going to mention.
Anything from the city attorney that we need to know about right now?
No, just, uh,
No, just, uh, thank you for bearing me with me through the, uh, the technical issues. I appreciate it.
Sure, okay. Uh, any commissioners have something to report?
Yes.
Judy?
It was my turn to go to the MAC meeting on, when was that, Monday night, I guess?
Monday, yeah.
They were very happy to see me, by the way. The only real business that they had going was a CUP for that auction house that's in Casitas Springs. Um, the, the CUP was up for a 20-year renewal and there were no real issues. Two, two citizens came to speak about it along with the applicant and it was passed with no problem.
Excellent.
And I gave them a report on, on Ojai.
Yeah, I would like to report something sort of on the housing committee related, the two items. So Judy and I did meet with Help of Ojai. We had a good meeting. I had a second meeting with Bill Miley and, um, Renee Roth. And, uh, we've also reached out to Dan Parz- Parzale. I'm not sure how you pronounce his name, but he is the executive director of Mesa, which is outside the city, but it's a, um, it's going to be tiny house development, which is transitional for people in foster care to avoid homelessness. So that's part of the continuum of homelessness issues we're looking at.
Foster care?
Yes, they take people that are leaving foster care because there's extremely high percentage of them that end up homeless or drugs or, you know, because they don't get very good treatment. So this is kind of a transition to avoid, it's a preventive thing to avoid homelessness. It's right outside of Ojai. So, um, in these conversations, the, uh, I'm putting together on either June 4th or June 11th. This is officially sponsored by the Democratic Club. Uh, we're going to have a forum on homelessness and we're going to focus on prevention and.
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday, like the other ones, and transitional housing and permanent housing for homeless. So we're inviting Dan, Help of Ojai, which, you know, they're seeking funding for, well, they get some funding already for their, uh, rental assistance program, which is designed to prevent people from homeless. And then we're also getting someone from Cabrillo, Cabrilo?
Cabrillo.
Cabrillo. Not this project over here that we're considering, the one in Miramonte, which is actually going to be a homeless transition facility. And they're going to talk about the services.
Gaslight building.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to talk about those. So this is going to be a forum. Uh, and if, if there's no objection, uh, we're going to also have our task force be co-sponsors of that.
Which task force?
Our subcommittee.
Our subcommittee.
Housing Subcommittee. We, we wanted to let you know what we were doing and.
Please turn on your microphone. This is just to inform you of what we have been doing and to give you an opportunity if you object to the forum.
Well, not to the forum, whether you, you object to us, the committee being a co-sponsor of the forum. The forum's going to happen anyway.
Yeah.
And what is, what does the sponsoring entail? Just putting her name on it?
Yeah, just that they would help, you know, yeah, and probably Judy would help be a moderator.
Oh, okay.
So I'm probably going to ask that the Ojai Valley News to also co-sponsor it so that we get more, you know, when the newspaper does it, we get a lot more attention, a lot more people. So we'll see, but anyway, this is, it's not a, it's not political at all. It's just a forum about.
Just educational.
Educational.
Yeah, I think it's great.
So. Okay.
No problem.
Appreciate it. And I hope you all come.
Anything, anything you'd like to chip in with? I, I would like to ask if we could have then, as a regular member, whether it's a regular member of our agenda, either a discussion item or informational item, that we list inputs from the housing ad hoc committee and from the parking ad hoc committee.
Do you want us to write stuff in advance? Or just oral?
An, an oral report.
Okay.
Because anything more formal than that, I think will come out of the city council's ad hoc committee.
That's true.
Anyway.
I think, yeah, like what Judy just did with the MAC, you know, just a summary.
Yep.
I think that's great. That'd be great.
Okay?
Awesome.
Uh, we do not have a city council liaison tonight?